There we go. So the way that we're going to do this tonight is we're going to do the public hearing first, which I'm calling to order now at 7:01. What I will do is I'll go through, I'll read all just the article numbers and the names. And if anybody wants to talk about that one more, just say, hey, hold up, or I want to chat about this one, or whatever. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll go through and we'll vote on everything. And that should be pretty zippy to get through everything. How does that sound to everybody? Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fantastic.
So this is the forum for the FINCOB to amongst ourselves review the articles of the warrant, is that correct?
Well, it's supposed to give the chance for the public to weigh in on these things before we vote on them.
Right.
But seeing as Denise is the only member of the public that's currently here right now, it's probably just going to be us talking, which is fine. That's life sometimes.
Okay.
So do you guys all have a copy of the warrant in front of you? Or do you want Denise to share it on her screen?
Yeah.
You're good? Okay. So here we go. Article one, reports of select board and other officers and committees.
Erica, can I just interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
Do you want to make me co-host so if someone else comes in, I can allow them access? So that you don't have to vote?
Oh, yeah. Sure. That's a good idea. Please call. Make co-host. Yes, please.
All right. So I'll keep an eye on that as we go through.
Fabulous. Thank you. Article two, reports of special committee. Article three, the wage and salary schedules for fiscal year 2023. We skipped a bunch of pages.
And I'm happy to go through whether it's now or after the public hearing, but since no one's on, I'm happy to go through and talk about some of the changes now if you want. So it's up to you guys.
How did I miss? Where the heck is Article four?
It's after.
Article four, general budget for fiscal year 2023. I skipped right over it.
Yes.
I think we've already gone through that in detail. Article five is the revolving fund for inspection fees. Article six is revolving fund for advanced life support services. Article seven, Stowe Cultural Council. Article eight, the SMART 911 rave notification system. Article nine, weights and measures testing. Article 10, transfer to conservation fund. Article 11, transfer from wetlands protection fund. Article 12, addition to conservation fund. Article 13, the Assabet River Water Chestnut Control. Article 14, update of property valuations. Article 15, town records binding and repair. Article 16, highway road.
I'm just curious, Erica, do I just kind of jump in and say, stop, stop, stop?
Go stop. Yeah, totally.
Okay.
And if you miss one, Kevin, we can go back.
Yeah, we can totally go back. Yeah. This is not the last step. You're a member of the committee. You can talk whenever you want.
Cool. So on the town records, I'm just curious to know, I mean, is that like a physical paper thing?
Yeah, we're legally required by the state of Massachusetts to keep all of our records, not just on the computer. We have to have like a printed bound thing. And I can't remember how many years back we're supposed to keep these things.
So most of the town clerk material is forever. They're permanent records. There's no disposal schedule. The town clerk was doing $200 a year and then saving up money to bind them. And I said, well, that just doesn't make sense. Let's do 2,000. We'll get a bunch done, and then we can resume. But it's all of the, and it's funny, we actually got a notice today from the Secretary of State and the Attorney General because there's so much malware and viruses and web concerns with even cloud storage that we cannot just keep things in electronic format anymore. So all of our meeting minutes, we have to, sorry, all of our meeting minutes have to be printed and hard copied. So the town reports, the town meeting warrants, all of those have to be permanently kept in hard copies. So she has them bound and then stored in book form format in our basement.
Good. Thanks. That answers my question.
Okay. Article 16, highway road machinery, private ways and municipal parking lots. Article 17, highway engineering fees. Article 18, household hazardous waste collection. Article 19, municipal solid waste disposal. Article 20, Stowe TV expenses. Article 21, holiday decorations and lighting fund. Article 22, audit of financial records. Article 23, transfer to OPEB trust fund. Article 24, transfer from MWPAT, the Harvard Acres Wells loan receipts. Article 25, water system expenses. Article 27, construction and maintenance of water holes for firefighting. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. On Article 25, water system expenses, $50,000 a year for testing.
It's maintaining the town hall, public water supply, which is the town hall, the town building, the town hall, the library, the former fire department, and two residential properties, and the church, which are on this loop. That is for the annual testing and maintenance of the water system because it's a public water supply.
It sounds like, I'm surprised, somebody is surprised and shocked at the cost of that. Why is it so expensive, Denise?
Honestly, that's just what it takes to maintain. That would, it's less than if we brought those services in-house and had to keep someone trained to do the work. So we outsource it and have contractors come in and do the, they have to do, because we're under the PFAS umbrella, they have to do testing, they're here like twice a week to test the systems, and then they have to maintain it, report things with the DEP. So it's actually increased dramatically over the last few years. We were at about 32,000 a year. This past year, we're up to about 40,000, and we've increased it to 50 because the DEP has just levied additional tests on us under PFAS. So.
Well, and also, Kevin, the requirements for a private well like at your house are significantly different from a public water supply well, which is why we haven't been able to do anything with the gas station across the street from Shaw's because we'd have to put in a public water supply, and we haven't quite figured out how to financially make that happen.
Right. And I do want to clarify, just because it's a public water supply doesn't mean it's town-owned. So any system, any well that people are drinking, members of the public are drinking, is considered a public water supply. So the Linear Plaza with Shaw's, they have their own public water supply. Russell's next door has a public water supply. So once it rises to that level, there's different requirements and testing that's required under DEP to ensure that it's safe for public consumption.
Yeah. Public meaning, just it's not so much that it's owned by the government, but that it's used by more than just the private citizens who live on that property. Yeah.
Right.
Good clarification.
And how do we, just for my education, how do we, how do we manage the testing? Maybe is this something we put out to competitive bid periodically, or how is that done?
So yes and no. It does count under engineering because we have to hire an engineering firm to come in and do it. It's only been about two years since we've been under this new protocol. So when we brought them in, we went out to bid and brought in, they're called Whitewater, and they're the company that was the best price. The hope would be that once we put in a new filtration system, which some money was appropriated last year through capital to make additional upgrades to this system, as well as Kate Hogan got us about $110,000 through the state for this system. Once we're able to get a filtration system and get this, I'm squared away with PFAS, the testing should drop dramatically. And we've actually talked about the possibility of having someone in-house be trained to do the testing, but not a true water manager, but just some type of staff that could do those tests and reporting. You know, perhaps that's down the line once we get our system squared away.
Well, thanks for filling me in.
Sure. Article 26, select board's small purchases fund. Article 27, construction and maintenance of water holes for firefighting operations. Article 28, Lake Boone water quality remediation. Article 29, planning board, engineering consulting, and master plan expenses. Article 30, community preservation expenses. Article 31, community preservation reserves. Just for the new folks, this is the money that CPC gets from the state match and then what they get from tax dollars. They have to divvy it out into three buckets, and they have to put a certain amount in each of those buckets to be compliant with the state CPC overview group. So that's what this is, is them saying, okay, we know we're going to get this approximate amount of money, and this is how we're going to divvy it up into the buckets, and the town has to approve it. So this isn't actually money that we're having to set aside. It's sort of money that's already coming down the pike. It's a little weird. Article 32, veterans benefits. Article 33, tax title proceedings. Article 34, online permit and license fees. Article 35, online budgeting software, which I love, by the way.
Pretty awesome.
It's amazing. Article 36, replacement of personal protective equipment for structural firefighting. Article 37, Department of Unemployment Assistance. Article 38, complete streets prioritization funds. Article 39, the Lake Boone Patrol, of course, the last one of the consent calendar. So next up are the capital requests. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read off each individual one because even though they're all under Article 40, it's like Article 40-1, Article 40-, so we have to vote on each one of those. So for the police department, it's a replacement of a cruiser with a hybrid SUV. For the highway department, it's the feasibility study for the Highway Barn, such a weird name. The third one, also the highway department, is the resurfacing and curbing of Farm Lane. Number four is the highway department, the Lake Boone Dam repairs. Number five, highway department, replacement of six-wheel dump truck. And Article six is, the NRSD is asking for the Hale Gymnasium floor to be refinished.
And I do want to make one slight correction in the revised version I sent out this morning. Number three, the highway department, it's Farm Road. We do not have a Farm Lane, so I made that correction this morning.
All right. I'll make sure I say that when we vote on it. Any questions about any of these capital items? No? Okay.
None, for me.
Article 41, National Guard Reserve Tax Relief. Article 42, Stowe Municipal Affordable Trust Red Acre Road Community Housing. So this is a CPC project, if you're wondering where this money is coming from. It has it in the bottom of the blurb about the article. Article 43, funding support for Stowe Town Hall restoration. So I personally don't understand why this is still in here. The select board made it pretty clear that they want to have a joint boards meeting about this after town meeting. I understand that they're concerned that there are going to be marching orders that are coming out of that joint boards meeting. But it just seems like the select board made a decision about this, and it just, to me, it feels like they're not listening. So I'm just sort of, I don't understand, like, you were told, we want to have a joint boards meeting, we want to do it after town meeting, and they're still plowing forward. So I don't know. Kevin, do you have any insight on this? Am I reading this wrong?
No, I don't think you're reading it wrong. And I mean, my understanding of the situation is that, you know, the committee recognizes that they don't have the support of the select board or other boards. Nonetheless, they want the warrant article to proceed, and the monies to be, you know, provided through that warrant article.
Okay. Well, when we come back to vote on this, y'all can tell me what you, how you feel about it.
Denise, do you have a different understanding?
No. I mean, that was my understanding was that the committee had asked for some funding because of the joint boards meeting, and as Erica said, that the idea was if something was decided at that meeting that needed funding, they would have some money to move forward with CPC. By a majority, supported the article. They were not unanimous, but by a majority felt the same way. To make some concessions, we added that the money could only be spent under the direction of the town administrator with the Community Preservation Committee, so it was not the Town Hall Restoration Committee deciding if the funding was okay, to put an extra safeguard in place to make sure it was only going to be spent if something came out of that joint boards meeting.
Thank you.
So for Scott, who just signed in, we're in the public hearing part right now. So at any time, if you want to hop in and ask a question, please feel free to do so. We are on Article 44, renovations to the Randall Library. Next is Article 45, to supplement prior borrowing votes to permit the application of sale premium to pay project costs for the renovations for the Randall Library. Article 46, repurpose previously allocated funds. Article 47, transfer to stabilization fund. Article 48, creation of capital stabilization fund. Article 49, a debt recent recession, excuse me. Article 50, legal services. Article 51, MS4 storm water permit requirements. Article 52, purchase of highway equipment.
Let me jump in here again.
Yeah.
Denise, can you, is there a breakdown of where the requested funds are going? And the reason I ask is that, so I own an automotive business, and the monies being requested here seem pretty high.
Yeah.
I own an industrial power pressure steam washer, cost me 2,400 bucks to buy it. The compressor, about the same.
Yeah, so it's almost split. I think it's 8,500 for the air compressor and 8,000 for the pressure washer. And I'm just going to pull up and see if they had the actual quotes for it.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how you spend $8,000 on a pressure washer.
I don't either, but it was supposed to be something that could do the big dump trucks to get inside there and clean out in the salting and sanding machines that would, I don't know, do enough to clean those up.
Yeah. Bring my shop, I'd be happy.
All right. Everyone here heard that in a public meeting.
Kevin, I'm not sure you've seen how large those trucks are. It might take you a bit to do that.
Well, you haven't seen my pressure washer. It's a beast.
Yeah, I'm just going to pull it up real quick because I'm pretty sure he gave me, oh no, those were article requests. Where am I? If you want to keep talking, and I'll find it, and we can come back to that.
Yep.
That's fine.
Article 53, purchase of cemetery equipment. Article 54, the former Gleesendale School lot. Now, Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, if you're on Crescent Street, it is the white garage building that's across sort of diagonal from the old, from the library, or no?
No, this is down in Gleesendale, so by the bridge.
Gleesendale. Yeah, yeah.
There's a little, it's a grassy area. It's almost like a little rectangle of space that right now the neighbors use to park on when there's overflow parking. Some other neighbors want to make it a little park with some grassy area, a couple of benches, and a couple parking spaces. This piece right here is just transferring it from conservation into the recreation department so that something could, if necessary, be done with it.
Okay.
But no, it's down in Gleesendale.
Okay. Article 55, Green Advisory Committee Funds. Article 56, amend the general bylaw, Article 11 Personnel Administration. Uh, wait, my, whoops, sorry, a couple pages of. Article 57, road acceptance, brandy mead circle. Article 58, amend zoning bylaw, section 6.1 Hammerhead Lots. Article 59, amend zoning bylaw, section 5.3 Wireless Service Facility Overlay District. That's the last one.
And I'm going to, whoops, I'm going to share my screen on those two quotes, Kevin, so you can see them. All right. So this is the air compressor, which means nothing to me, but feel free, and I'm happy to email them to you if you would like.
That would be great.
Yeah, so this one is in for the 8,000, and then here is the pressure washer. So 6,500 is the government price. And obviously, these quotes came in back in November, so we've increased them slightly to make sure we could cover the purchase. But I'll send them to you all right now, just so you have them.
Thank you.
All righty. So unless Scott has any questions, I'm going to end the public hearing portion of this meeting, and then the finance, the committee is going to go through and vote on everything. Great. All right. So 7:22, we are ending the public hearing portion, and now we can go back and vote on each of these article items. I think the easiest thing is going to be for Brian to make a motion, Kevin to second, and then we're going to just go Brian, Kevin, Evgenia, Chris, and me. And then that way I can just copy and paste in the minute. Everybody's name, and I don't have to type that out every single time.
So we're not allowed to vote by a claim or whatever the fancy word is for that?
Uh, what do you mean?
Rather than seconding and getting a roll call vote for every article item.
No, unfortunately, because we are on Zoom, we need to do, we have to do a roll call vote for each item.
But I would say you don't necessarily need to take individual votes. You could go like one to 10. You could go through all of them and take one vote if you have, unless there's ones that you don't want to be unanimous on, however you want to handle it. But you don't have to vote on each individual article as a standalone vote.
Is news that I like to hear.
Yes.
So I would say, is there anything in the consent calendar, which is the first 39 articles, which are generally the ones where you don't really have a choice on? Was there anything in there that anybody wasn't thrilled about, wasn't planning on voting yes, or would otherwise like to revisit?
Give me two seconds just to scan through.
Yeah, no, vote, yeah, absolutely. Take your time.
I think that these are largely the same as everything in the consent calendar in.
Yeah, pretty much every year.
Past several.
Yeah.
So I think the only difference in the consent calendar this year are like the last few articles, and that's because they're voted on every year, and they're minimal amounts. But I put them under the consent calendar, like unemployment, we have no choice in budgeting for unemployment. So there are some things, the Lake Boone Patrol, that's been a separate standalone article. I moved that under the consent calendar because, again, we do that every year, and that's how we fund the patrols at the lake. So they've always been in the warrant, just I moved them to make it a little better.
There's the best budgeting software ever.
Yes, I need to, I need to find a way to print some of the department requests because we were able, I put out all that information out last year so people could read sort of all the department information ahead of time. It doesn't come out when I just print the book, so I don't know how many people actually read it, but.
All right, I'm good.
Yeah.
Kevin, Eugenia, do you guys have any questions?
No.
No.
All right. Man, this is going to be weird. Okay. I make a motion that we recommend for approval, the 39 articles of the consent calendar as written.
Can I second that motion?
Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes. All right. Now we're up to the capital request. I don't think I have any, we've talked about most of these in great length.
Everything in Article 40, I feel like we've covered six ways from Sunday.
Anybody else have questions or concerns about these items?
I do not.
Great.
I make a motion that we recommend for approval, the six items, six capital requests under Article 40 as written.
I second that.
Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am also a yes.
So can I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
So you're making the motion as written, but they may change based on town council's review.
Okay.
So.
How would you like, how would you like us to word this? If we word it, we make a motion.
Pending non-substantive changes from town council.
Yeah.
And that can just be across the board for all of them, but because they have not finished their review yet, so they may have some legal changes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they had already. Nope, that's fine.
No, they have not finished.
All right. So I'm just going to write this down, pending non-substantive changes. Yeah, because sometimes they tweak things a little bit.
Yes. And I don't expect, actually, the consent calendar in Article 40, I don't expect any changes too, but.
Yeah. No, that's good. Just, I really don't want to have to do this again. So for technicality, that would be, so should we do, should we vote on Article 40 again? Do you think we're okay?
Let's vote again, just to be plain.
I would vote on one through 40.
Okay. So one through 40, Brian?
I'm, yeah, we're trying to get this right this time. I make a motion that we recommend for approval, articles one through 40 as written, pending barring substantive changes.
Pending non-substantive changes, yes.
Non-substantive changes from legal.
I second that.
Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes. All right. Let's see, what are the next? So 41 is the National Guard Reserve Tax Relief. And then let's just do 41 and 42 together because I want to talk about this town hall one.
Yeah. I make a motion that we recommend for approval, articles 41 and 42 as written, pending non-substantive changes from legal counsel.
Brian? Oh, sorry. Jumping the gun, Kevin, sorry. Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes. Okay. So then the next one is Article 43, funding support for Stowe Town Hall restoration. Brian, would you like to make a motion?
I'd actually like to talk about this one. Can we even, I mean.
We can just vote, we can vote no, and then it's the finance committee does not recommend this article, is what will go into the town warrant.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to run this because we talked about this twice now, and I just want to make sure I have it completely straight. The, they went to the select board, and the select board said no.
Well, no. The select board said, we want to talk about this, but we want to talk about it with joint boards after the town meeting. And then the committee went back and said, well, we should set aside some funds in case this joint boards group decides after town meeting that we can move forward, we're going to set aside a completely arbitrary amount of money, to be quite honest with you, because they have no clue what's going to happen at this joint boards meeting. And we want to be able to have this money in case we need to do something after June.
Something was really focused on additional communication of what the proposed plan for the town hall restoration is, you know, socializing and giving presentations, meeting with boards and so forth.
Okay. I suppose my problem with it is, it is a volume of cash with no, no discrete purpose. A volume of cash with no, no discrete purpose. To be spent if approved. At a later date with approval for, with, with oversight by the town administrator. What are we recommending, like, this isn't, there's no thing we're buying, there's no plan we're spending this on, it's. Putting this money aside in case on the off chance that maybe in the future, we might need to use it for a project.
For the town hall project, correct?
For, for the town hall project, but we don't know what for for the town hall project.
Correct, yes. That is what they want to, I mean, I think my biggest issue with this is. I think they are assuming their project is moving forward. And my understanding of the joint, the point of the joint boards meeting. Is to discuss this building and all of the options, all of the options, including selling it, knocking it down, doing nothing. Renovating it to the full hilt, that is what my understanding is, is that we are going back to the drawing board on this building. But the committee is still like, great, after the joint boards, we will move forward with our renovation, it's like, nope, that is not what the Select Board said to you. And you don't seem to be hearing them, so.
Right, and I do want to clarify, they did ask the Select Board for an additional 50,000. For fundraising to hire a professional fundraiser, to that the board said no. So there was another ask of the Select Board for an additional 50,000 that they did say no to.
On top of this, or separate?
Yeah, because the fundraising money they can't get from CPC, they had to ask the Select Board for that. Because you can't hire a fundraiser using CPC funding.
Okay.
So the Select Board didn't necessarily weigh in on this article, they will do that tomorrow night. They discussed it and they were sort of split on whether or not some funds might be needed this summer or not.
Yeah, I mean, another thing we can do is we don't have to vote on this tonight. We can wait and we can see what the Select Board does tomorrow night, and then we can vote on this at town meeting. And then I can just get up at town meeting and say, you know, this is what we decided, it just won't get printed in the warrant. So it's really not a big deal if we decide we want to like sit on it. And not vote on it.
Anybody? In, in past conversations on this project, I think that everybody in this committee has been. Effectively unanimous in opposition to this entire project. And. I feel like we should vote on this, and also I think in the past when we have put in our vote, we have editorialized on a couple of things. When we've said no for a reason. And then maybe, maybe it's. Maybe. We should do so here, is we should take a vote. Maybe it will turn out, yes, I think that it will probably turn out to be no. And maybe we should explain why we think it should be no, which is that. This project seems largely lacking in community support, given the amount of money that it is likely to cost over the long term. And, we get consistent, effectively consistently nickel and dime. Over, let's hire an architect, we didn't like that architect, let's hire another architect. Oh, they didn't give us other option, let's have them do more stuff, hey, let's allocate $50,000 for this and $100,000 for that, and we. For reasons that I don't entirely understand, we don't seem to be able to just say, no, we're not interested in doing this, just stop. And I feel like maybe we should take the opportunity here to say, the answer is no. And the answer for anything related to this project will continue to be no. And just nickel and diming while we get around to someday having the town vote on a $4 million renovation is not very helpful.
Yeah, Chris, I agree with a lot of what you said, but I have a slightly different perspective on it. Having sat through a half dozen or so different meetings with the group. My great frustration has been that the group hasn't taken the feedback and hasn't, hasn't. Taken the opportunity to say, okay, we need to, we need to point this project in a different direction. We really need to come back with a smaller budget. We need to, we need to figure out fundraising, we need to find a path forward that. You know, has some chance of success. The guys on the committee with maybe one or two exceptions. Aren't there, and it's like Groundhog Day talking to them, to be, to be, I don't mean to be rude to anybody. So, you know, I'm personally uncomfortable voting any funds to this. Until. You know, the group gets pointed in the right direction. And I don't need funding to get pointed in the right direction.
Yeah, if there was, if, if there had been, hey, here is. I don't know, I, I seem to remember previous sort of reports from this of, hey, we don't really have a good plan for doing fundraising, like. To your point, like, I don't know why we continue to have these, these small incremental discussions and votes on smaller amounts of money and never. Never, it seems like never a good plan, and also like. I don't know, we don't seem to be moving any closer to closure on this, which drives me a little bit crazy. Like, I feel like we've talked about this project.
I'm sorry, that was some of the feedback that came from the Select Board meeting was, hey, um, you know, this is the same. Plan you've shown us two prior years, if I remember correctly. Nothing's changed.
It is, and I will say, I mean, I was disappointed, I met with. Doug and Courtney from the committee the week before. The Select Board meeting, the CPC meeting, and I said to them, I have now asked you a number of times, other people have asked to see what. Just the cost of bringing it up to code is, nothing extra. You need to show that, and then they, the next week came and those meetings came and they still didn't show that, they stuck by the 4.8 million dollars or whatever the cost was. And I think that's what's hurting them is, it's to me, the project is not transparent. Don Mills, who I think is probably a wonderful architect, but he shouldn't be speaking on behalf of the committee. He should not be soliciting additional funds when it's to go into his pocket and do additional designs. I think that's doing a disservice to the committee and the project. And I think that they, the lack of community outreach has been a huge disservice of the project. And that was the point that people have been making regarding fundraising, that it's not as much about how much money people are contributing or how much money you're raising. It's, if people are willing to donate, then they support the project, so, and the fact that you have none of that. Because there is not a lot of community momentum behind it. It is, is a hindrance, and, and they haven't sort of taken that feedback and thought like, well, maybe we need to go in a new direction, maybe we should shift gears now. Um, and that's been disappointing.
Yep, understood. And part of the, you know, part of the reason for that is frankly, is, is the architectural terms and retained. Don is just stuck on the 4.8 million dollar project and cannot. I mean, he's the guy who should be creative, he's, he's the guy who can actually say, oh yeah, as an architect, I know how to break this down into something that. You know, could meet our accessibility or our minimal requirements. But he, he refuses to budge on that point, so. I suggested to Doug in private communication that. We should consider whether he's right, his right for him for us to continue working with.
Yeah, and I have told, I told Doug and I have said the same to my board, that when and if. This joint boards meeting occurs, Don Mills should not be speaking, he is not a town representative. He is, quite frankly, he's working for us, and I don't even think he's doing that to the extent that he should be. Because when he's hearing the feedback that we need to change this project. And it's not changing at all, that he should not be standing there advocating on behalf of this. Or criticizing that all these other towns borrow under their CPA funds, and why aren't we doing that, that is not, you know, he is not our spokesperson.
Right.
Well, and I think the thing that's frustrating is like, so the library came and they said, okay, here are three options. And it was like, oh, okay, yeah, the most expensive one actually is the one that makes the most sense. And so it's like, we're not saying, no, you're definitely not going to get the nice fancy thing you want. I just want to know that the nice fancy option is financially the best option for the town. Like, don't just, don't just kind of be like, yep, here's your one and only choice, it's like, no, guess what's another choice, wrecking ball is a choice. So like. Stop, you know, stop telling me that there's no other option, there's always other options. And I, it was literally when I joined CPC, I joined this committee and then CPC, what, four years ago, I think? I was taking over for Atlee Thornton, and he literally said to me, make them tell you all the options. He was fighting with them about this way back then of like, what's the just bring it up to code option? And even back then, they were like, we need an elevator, and he was like, no, no. So it's just, yeah, it's definitely, I'm with Chris, like, they don't, they're just not hearing us, and how do we get their attention? I think you, yeah, so.
And I mean, and Atlee is such a, is such a calm, soft-spoken person.
I'm sure that they misinterpreted him, I'm sure it wasn't clear what he wanted. Alright, somebody make a motion so we can vote on this, and even if it's not unanimous, fine.
Uh, alright, I make a motion that we do not recommend Article 43.
No, I'm gonna interrupt you, you need to make a motion for favorable action and then vote it down.
You voted down, so you say this, and then we say no to you.
Okay. I'm, let's see, I'm, look, three years and I'm still learning things.
Brian is allowed to vote no on his own motion, and how this works.
That's interesting. Because really, the motion is just to initiate a vote, anyone can make a motion.
Oh, sure.
Yep.
Alright, uh, I make a motion that we recommend Article 43 for approval as written. Barring pending non-substantive changes from legal counsel.
Kevin, you got a second?
Second.
Brian.
No.
Evgenia.
No.
Kevin.
No.
Chris.
No.
I am also a no. Alrighty.
For the more parliamentary-minded people here, what happens if a motion doesn't get a second in one of these councils?
So it would just go in with no motion or no recommendation from Finance Committee, and you'd still have to make one on town meeting floor because it is a financial article.
Oh, interesting, cool, good to know, thank you.
We'd hold your feet to the fire, Brian.
So you could do that on non-financial articles, if you really didn't want to take a position, you could just have a motion and not seconded, but anything.
Because of our charter, we are required to make a recommendation on.
Yes, on anything financial.
Um, so do we want to vote the two library articles together, since they're both. Technically about the same project, even though. Separate article items.
And so actually, it's three, it's Articles 44, 45, and 46, all.
Oh, sorry, 46 is moving the money, yep.
Yes.
And the, anybody want to discuss any of these three?
And so if anyone's not familiar with, for Article 45 with premium, when municipalities sell bonds or notes, the. The buyer of our bonds usually gives us a cash payment as a premium, it's sort of like a thank you. Several years ago, the state changed the law that it could only, so any funding you get, which is called a premium, could only be spent or used to offset additional debt in the future. So there are two borrowings that are sitting out there from 2015 and 2016. That combined has a total of $140,000 and change worth of premium that we have been waiting for a project to apply it against. Because we don't borrow every year, so this will be taking that 140,000 and applying it against the library project if everything passes. Which would then decrease the debt exclusion. And then the following article is. At 2020 annual town meeting, 103,000 was appropriated to replace the roof and the AC unit. We obviously did not do that, quite frankly, the first quotes came in so high. Which worked out well, because now that we're talking about renovating all of that. It would have been a waste of money anyways, this would reallocate those funds to the project as well, again, lessening the debt exclusion by $103,000 if everything passes.
So it's 44, 45, and 46?
Yes.
Alright, uh, I make a motion, we recommend Articles 44, 45, and 46 for approval as written. Pending non-substantive changes by legal counsel.
Thank you, thank you, Brian, my second that.
Brian.
Yes.
Evgenia.
Yes.
Kevin. Kevin, I need you to say.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, Chris.
I'm trying to read Denise's email.
I, I realized that I had, I should have, I think that I should have asked my question before we went to vote.
You can ask a question now, it's okay.
Oh, okay, so, um, I read through the, what's the name of this thing, the Randall Library final presentation with the. Beautiful renders and all the rest, and. Did I, am I understanding this correctly, that either adding on. To the, to the existing facility, like building over the 1970 whatever, or tearing it down and building a new thing. Are basically the same cost, like within anybody's ability to predict a cost, it's a wash?
Correct.
Okay, I'm a yes.
And I am also a yes. Alrighty, um, so next we have. How many of these, does, so looking at, looking at the ones we have left, which is from Article 47. Through, it's called. Oh my gosh, I always forget with these zoning things, how much stuff you have to include. Article 47 through Article 59. Are there any things, anything that people see that are. Questionable ones, one you want to talk about, we can pull it out of the. The slew here.
Yeah.
No.
52.
And Erica, the, again, my apologies, the revised warrant, I sent you this morning, has an Article 60, but it's the election warrant. So you don't need to vote on it, but there is a 60th article which talks about the town election.
Oh, okay.
So, I just wanted to clarify that there are 60 in total.
Yep.
Can I, I had, I had a couple of probably relatively minor questions, Don. For Article, Article 47, and I, a part of it is that I just don't remember the number off the top of my head, what exactly 10 to 15% of the general fund budget would end up being? What that target range is.
So it increases obviously every year, um, let me just pull up where we are right now. So it's not far off from where we are, I know that. So if I just use the municipal budget. So just looking at the municipal budget and not the schools, 10% is 856,000, now this is using the proposed FY23 budget. And then 15% would be. 1.2 million.
Okay, alright, that, that also answered my other question, which was whether the schools counted in or out, I, I read it as out, but I wasn't really sure.
Yes.
Okay, and then it's roughly ditto what the target is for the capital stabilization fund?
So there's really no target, um, anything that we put into a stabilization fund, so what I would recommend, you know, so when reading agencies look at us, they're gonna add those together to get our total. The nice thing with capital stabilization, and it's not unlike regular stabilization, only it's dedicated just for capital. Regular stabilization, if for God forbid we had a really bad year and we needed to balance the budget. Not that I would support it, but you could appropriate stabilization funds, this would dedicate it so that when we have some of these larger purchases. You know, a $300,000 dump truck, a $4.8 million renovation, we would already be setting money aside to sort of pay for those or pay for debt service on those. So there's really no target, I just like to, once we have it created, just put some amount of money, I'm starting with 75,000. Even if it's that every year, we're putting it away and saving it for future expenses.
Okay, um. And then, is it, does it end up being like some of the other line items where it can't be re-appropriated then? Like, it can only be used to meet capital expenses essentially?
Correct, and with the two-thirds vote, so to put it in and to take it out of stabilization. Correct, and with the two thirds vote, so to put it in and to take it out of stabilization, needed two thirds majority of town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, this came up after we had that very big year a few years ago where we were the money for Lower Village and then, you know, it was like one thing after another, it was like, we need a savings account for this. This is getting out of control.
Um, given that like, I think, sorry Mike, I don't know if you can hear them, my kids are in the background because they're supposed to be brushing their teeth. Um, given that pretty much every year we've had capital expenses north of seventy-five thousand, do we expect to allocate and then immediately deplete this every year?
No.
Or is this like, like how do we decide when to spend this money and what proportion of it to spend?
Well, so that would be a conversation, obviously, um, my recommendation is we leave this for several years. We build up the account and then we figure out what the best approach is. You know, it certainly could be that we buy a, again, I'll use a dump truck. So maybe we don't have great free cash or we have other purchases to use our free cash with. We could then borrow a dump truck and pay, you know, five years and take it out of the stabilization. So we're putting seventy-five in, we're taking thirty-five thousand out or something like that. Or we could say, you know what, we know that we're going to need to fix the Lake Boone Dam, so we want to build up money and then pay cash for that with this fund. It's really a conversation that we will have, but I think we should be growing the account for a few years before we really start talking about that.
And, and we should think of it as something to be spent in exceptional cases. Cause I like, I'm thinking of the last, the last budget presentation we had from the Highway Department where they were basically like, every piece of equipment we own is thirty years old and it runs on bubble gum and baling wire. And so like this year, it's a, it's a dump truck, but like next year, it's going to be the bucket truck or what, I think we, we just did the bucket truck. So.
But you're right, it's a, it's a big piece of equipment every year. And then factored into that in the five-year capital is a lot of infrastructure. There's, um, bridges, there's dams that, you know, will try and go for grants, but quite frankly, those are capital assets of the town that we will have to fund one way or another in order to fix them. So there is a lot coming down the road in five-year capital requests for, um, equipment and, and really capital projects.
Okay, seems fine.
Okay, so do we want to vote on forty-seven through fifty-one? Sound good? Great, Brian?
I make a motion that we recommend for approval Articles forty-seven through fifty-one inclusive as written, uh, pending non-substantive changes from our legal counsel.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I M E S. Alright, that brings us up to Article fifty-two, purchase of said highway equipment. So this is the industrial pressure washer. Kevin, did you want to hold on this one and we can vote on it later or?
Yeah, we can, I mean, I don't really know, you know, obviously I'm the new kid, uh, and I don't understand the process as well as y'all. Denise, I've had a chat, thank you very much for sending me those two quotes. Good price on the air compressor, uh, itself. Everything else is very questionable to me. The pressure washer is twice what it should cost. Looking at a, uh, you know, looking at, uh, a picture of what it is, I can't find that particular model described online except in municipal bid systems, which is weird.
I may have a brochure for that, let me, while you're talking, let me see if I can pull that up.
Oh yeah, that'd be great. And on the air compressor, so the, the core air compressor has to find price. The add-ons are double in price what they should be. And the, I don't see a need for the refrigerated air dryer, I've never s- I've been in many shops, I've never seen anybody that, um, that has such a thing in their air compressor system. How many, how many technicians do we have working? In our highway department garage?
So we only have one mechanic?
Yeah, this is kind of feels pretty gold plated to me. With all due respect, I mean, I, I like nice tools and I want them to have nice tools. But I don't, I don't see the need for this level of expenditure and, 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 uh, the refrigerated air dryer.
So I have, I do have a, um, a brochure, I'm going to download it and send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just cut that off.
And Denise, am I correct in, in surmising that, um, we're buying these as government-approved, uh, products through approved vendors?
Okay, yes, and they are both replacing existing equipment, so we're not adding equipment, we're replacing what we have.
Um, so we can hold on voting for this. We can ask, um, the, why, Denise, why can't I never remember the name of the nice man who works? Steve, I always want to call him Kevin and I'm like, that's not right. We can ask Steve for more information, um, we can do our own research. What, I don't know anything, you could tell me these things were a hundred thousand dollars, I'd be like, okay, great, I mean, that's what this costs, I don't know. So, but you seem to know a lot more about this than if you think that it's, um, way more than it needs to be, then um, I'm happy asking Steve to give us, uh, more information and we can just vote on this at town meeting.
That'd be great.
Let's hold on that one. Yeah, no problem. Um, the next one is the purchase of cemetery, uh, Article fifty-three, purchase of cemetery equipment. Um, I don't, don't know anything about cemetery equipment either, so.
Is a casket truck the same thing as a hearse?
No, it's like a hand truck.
Yeah.
Oh, for like moving a casket from a hearse to like.
Cemetery, you can't get a truck into them, I mean, like that weird one over by Shaw's, where I found out they're still burying people in there because they stack them up, which is very weird. I know, thank you, that's the face you should make. Cause I said, I was like, how could there possibly be any new people buried over there and because they have like family graves and they're just like one on top of another.
Yeah.
Uh, in some parts of the world, you rent your grave.
No, no.
That's fascinating. So, yeah, so anyway, so it's a lot of special equipment to deal with these cemeteries that you can't get a truck into, that is what I learned.
Yes.
But this article sounds so familiar, was it like, was it more or less the same last time?
So last year we bought, we bought equipment for the cemetery, the guy who works in the cemetery department, but that was like lawn mowers and stuff and he wasn't just using it for the cemeteries, he was using it for town green and stuff like that. So there, you do remember a thing for the cemetery, but it wasn't.
Right, and we approved, um, caskets. Cemetery protection mats, so they would put, they put them down like around to protect the nearby gravestones when they're having a burial. So the, the protection mats were, um, I think capital last year.
Yeah, so this is something different.
Yes. Again, replacing equipment and not, um, and not buying new things or adding new things.
Yep. Um, Brian, you want to make a motion for this one?
For just fifty-three?
Please.
Um, I make a motion that we approve Article fifty-three as written, pending non-substantive changes from our legal counsel.
Brian?
Yes.
Kevin, sorry, Jenny, I skipped you, women, do Evgenia, because then it messes me up.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Alright, former Gleesdale School lot, which is not near the library, it's on Gleesdale. I can't even picture like where this piece of land is, but I believe you.
I'll pull up a map if you'd like.
That's alright.
Okay.
Um, what do we have left here? Fifty-four, so fifty-five, Green Advisory Committee funds. What, so, alright, because this is, alright, separate from, I'm thinking of sustainable stove, which that is not this, that's something else, we'll talk about that after this, okay. Um, so looking forward, does anybody have questions about all this zoning rigmarole? Um, and the remaining articles, anything in here that you want to?
Uh, what is this thing about Brandy Mead Circle?
So Brandy Mead, Brandy Mead, this is a mess. As I put in the note, so back in two thousand and four, town meeting accepted Brandy Mead as a public way. Uh, but they put certain conditions on the developer to make sure things were met before it was finalized. He never met those conditions. The town took possession of the bond that he had on the roadway. Fast forward to twenty fifteen, it came up again. During those eleven years, the town decided that they really didn't need the updates that they required the developer to make. It was about flooding and drainage and they had no problems in those eleven years. They put it before town meeting again, uh, town meeting once again voted to accept Brandy Mead. And the staff here never filed the required paperwork with the Registry of Deeds or Mass DOT to legally accept it. Fast forward another six years and here we are, looking for it to be, uh, seven years. And now we're looking for it to be accepted for a third time so that we can actually file the paperwork and put it on our books as a legally accepted roadway.
Good lord. Yep, just can't make this stuff up sometimes. Kind of like finding out you haven't been paying the bills to your town paper in five years. Sorry, I'm still hung up on that, in case you're wondering.
Wait, like, that just, that just is a lot about how much they trust us as a town.
They were just like, yeah, we'll just take, keep this small town newspaper is just going to keep taking the hit for you. That was an embarrassing conversation anyways. Any other, any other questions about the remaining articles here? Fabulous, alright, shall we gang together? Article fifty-four through, well, you said we don't have to vote on sixty, right? So we'll just end it at fifty-nine?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, uh, I make a motion that we recommend for approval Articles fifty-four through fifty-nine as written, pending non-substantive changes from our legal counsel.
I second that.
Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I M E S. Fabulous, alright. Um, we should probably talk about this sustainable stove thing, um, I have no intention of us voting on this, it has no financial, financial implications on the town, it's not in the warrant. I'm sorry that they're grumpy that it's not in the warrant, but they didn't meet any of their deadlines, so I'm just telling you all that.
There is a tremendous amount of pressure on the board.
It's insanity.
They will be coming out in full force tomorrow night. And they have been calling and lobbying board members to try and get their
Oh, I heard.
Of putting this article on.
I mean, this seems, this seems this seems pretty easy and clear cut, you had a deadline, you didn't make the deadline, I appreciate you had to do this, I, you know, we all support it, great.
Well, yeah, we all support it to the point that we, we just voted money something that goes for green stove, like we have a group that's doing, I, I don't understand, I don't understand why we have this other.
We, we as a, as a town, ha- have said like, yes, this is a thing, we're moving towards this thing. We're willing to fund this thing, like we are aligned on this objective.
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir. I don't under, I don't know, so there it is, it's out there, um, so I did not know, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, given, given that, like, in the I, it's, it's a little bit surprising to me that there is even something that could be done, which is, hey, the town publishes deadlines and you didn't make the deadlines, like, the rules are the rules. The town creates the rules and everybody has to follow the rules and just because you really, really want it, like, I'm surprised that, that there is any op, like, there's any ability, you know, like, what would, what would create somebody that like, really, really, really wanted to add another totally arbitrary article to the warrant ten minutes before town meeting, right? Like, I'm, I'm surprised that it's even possible, that it is like legally possible.
So we have determined that it's not, um, I have an opinion from town council that says our charter has a clear timeline, which is citizens petitions must be filed ninety days before town meeting, which in this case would have been February, if we use the original date of town meeting, we're looking at like February third. If we were looking at the adjusted date of town meeting, it's like February thirteenth. Town council has said that is a firm deadline. And right in our charter, there is language that says the select board cannot override any provisions in this charter. However,
It's cut and dry.
I, I agree with you, the group feels, um, there are attorneys in that group and they feel that that's not correct and they are spiting different sections of mass general law, but our charter supersedes that because it is a town can make anything more restrictive. So mass general law says, there's no date, until you actually publish it, you can accept citizens petitions. Ours has a clear-cut deadline. So council, yeah, exactly, yep, so council, our council has said, there is no format that the select board can accept those. But they are not giving up. So, we will see what will happen tomorrow, I've advised the board, um, I don't support putting these forward. I think it's a bad precedent, it sends the wrong idea, uh, we have that additional, we have a zoning change, um, citizens petition that came in after the fact. There was a third one that wanted to submit and I told him he would, going to be, it was past the deadline. We can't just keep allowing people to submit petitions that may require due diligence. Zoning, the zoning petition would require public hearings and whatnot before town meeting. So, um, my feeling is if people don't like the ninety-day deadline, get together a charter review committee and change the charter, until then, our, our guiding document says ninety days.
PS, we did try to pull together a charter review committee this year and we couldn't get one, well, no, that's not true. There was one single person who was willing to volunteer and that was it. So I, my empathy level on this is quite low. So yeah, so we're not, oh, sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, um, the, at the bottom of the, um, article, it says.
The citizen's petition?
Pardon me?
The citizen's petition?
Uh, the sustainable, ar- article XX, non-binding resolution committing stove rapidly reducing, et cetera. It says it has, um, a financial impact. It will increase expenditures, I, it was important to me, why that, from reading the article, why that's the case.
Well, so the expectation is that putting in, now again, this is non-binding, so it depends on how you want to follow it. But the expectation is that when you start to reduce your dependency on fossil fuels, it does cost more money. You know, maybe when you amortize that in the long run, you save money over twenty, thirty years, but the upfront costs are significantly higher than, um, the upfront cost to stick with gas or whatnot.
Although anything.
And I think that, that, you know, you know, when, when it comes to actually making choices about, you know, replacing highway and police equipment, that would certainly be the case, but as I read the article as it's written, it's very vague and, and, you know, notional at this point. So I, I'm not sure I would agree that it necessarily, um, would, would have a financial impact.
And that's fine.
If the town wanted to like, convert the new dump truck to run on used fry oil, that would, that would end up being its own future article, right? Like, actually spending any money requires the creation of new articles or for it to fit within existing budgets, right? So like.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but there is, so this is a non-binding, um, there is a a push from the Green Advisory Committee to pass town policy that would require, um, decreased dependency on fossil fuels and that, in my opinion, just the passage of that article comes with the cost implication because that would then require anything new going in to be, um, green.
But if it, if it was like, if it required a change to the existing budget that requires its own vote, right? Like even if there was a binding resolution, stove must reduce its, its, um, carbon footprint by ten percent in the next year, like any actions to actually do that, that caused, uh, that had like a financial impact would get their own vote, right?
It would, but then you'd be stuck with the, well, the town passed this policy, you have to go with this type of fuel and you, if you want to replace the equipment at that point, our options. and you, if you want to replace the equipment at that point, our options would be limited if you have a binding policy in place.
Let me, let me play that one through, so let's say that there was a binding thing that said, we have to reduce our carbon footprint by ten percent. And, and maybe we even said, we have to, we have to convert our vehicles to use renewable resources in, in some way or another. And then the highway department came back and said, hey, the only way to do this is to convert to fry oil, and that'll cost a million dollars, and the town votes it down. So, we've got one vote that says, here's our emissions target, and we've got another vote that says, we don't like any of these ideas. What happens?
We'd be in trouble.
That's the question.
We'd be in trouble.
Like, no one's going to go to jail, we're just not going to do it.
No, we just, we wouldn't.
No, and all the capital expenses.
We wouldn't be able to replace that truck, because we would, to replace the truck, we would have to get something that fell under this new, you know, whatever rural law, whatever we want to call it for the town, and if the town kept voting it down.
Thou shalt use fry oil, or whatever.
Yeah, or, you know, thou shall buy a plug-in snowplow, or whatever the heck it is.
Sure.
And if the town kept voting it down, we wouldn't be able to replace the broken-down snowplow truck. So, it is sort of a catch-22, in that, like Denise is, you know, you're right, that passing the, you know, if this were on the warrant, and if we were to pass it, this thing by itself does not have a financial implication, except for the fact that then moving forward, we would not be able to make a decision that did not fall underneath the purview of this
Right.
green energy thing that we've passed.
And this one's non-binding, so even if this passes, this really doesn't, we could say, you know, we're not paying any attention to that, it's non-binding.
Right, although even a binding one, unless it had like very specific, like, policy prescriptions, like, if it just said, you must reduce by ten percent, like, that is, that's insufficiently specific to ever vote, to ever like say, oh, we can't buy a diesel-powered dump truck, right?
Right, but if it says all new equipment, all new equipment, all renovations to buildings, anything like that, must reduce by X amount. You know, then you're looking at each piece of equipment and how to do that.
Right, 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 so, so my, my takeaway is like, this is fine, because it's non-binding. A thing that is binding, we have to be very particular about what specific policy prescriptions it's making, because they might catch us later.
Yep.
Yes.
And, and just for my sake, and I'm going to make the assumption here that I'm hoping I am wrong about, which is that the if the select board decides against legal counsel's advice to bring this forward to town meeting, we would be required to make a statement about it, right?
No, it is still a, it would still be a non-binding resolution, and thus, we do not have to state our opinion on it as a committee, as individuals, for sure, you have a button, you can vote on it. And even if it passes, it's just like, hey, do you guys like this? Yes or no, it's not, it doesn't have any implications going forward, I think it's just, I think for the sustainable stove people, they're looking for this upswell of support, but I also sort of feel like, but we, we already are doing most of these things, like, we have a group that sits on all these committees, it's making sure that the library addition is going to be energy efficient, and that the HVAC system is going to be as green as it can be without bankrupting us. So, yeah, this sort of seems like a doubling of efforts.
I, I was asking specifically because of that final tagline of passage of this article increases expenditures. Like, does that line force our hand in making the recommendation?
No, and quite frankly, I mean, I could, if this goes in the warrant, I probably wouldn't even put any of that in, because it's a citizens petition, and, and if you're not making any recommendation on it, I wouldn't put that line in there.
All right, anything else on those? The petitions that were just, they're, they're out there, but.
I just want to know what this, like, two thousand and two zoning amendment thing is.
The other petition?
Yeah.
So that would allow, let me just pull it up, that would allow landscaping to take place in residential zones, so landscaping businesses, so this is really specific, quite frankly, to, what is it, D and D Farms on Hudson Road?
The three dot two dot two dot nine?
Yes. So they want to allow the zoning board to issue a special permit to allow a landscape business and contractor to be able to operate, fully operate in a residential district.
So they're trying to get their zoning changed?
Yes, correct.
Are we, this, let me make sure that I am, that we're talking about the same thing, landscaping business contracting yards, including material vehicle storage, da-da-da-da-da, provided that the special permit granting authority shall consider the historic use of the subject site and existing structures.
Yes.
And, and that implies that it is allowing special permits in residential areas?
Yes, if you read the, the lead-in, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, uses requiring a special permit from the Board of Appeals in a residential district. So currently.
Oh, so this is a whole new section in the residential section?
Correct.
What's the bit about the historic use of the subject site, is that just like?
Their grand, their grandfathered in, and they want to make sure it doesn't change.
Oh.
Because it's a farm, they want to keep it a farming concept, but make it a landscaping business.
Because if you're a farm, your tax implications are significantly lower than if you are a commercial property.
And farms are allowed in a residential district, whereas landscaping businesses are not.
Okay. Got it. This seems
self-serving.
Is anyone familiar with the term shysty?
Yeah, that's a good term for this one, for sure. I mean, again, they didn't make the deadline, so we don't have to do anything about this one either.
I'll, their attorney is going to be at the meeting tomorrow night, because they, they would like to see this go forward as well.
Yeah, shocking. What's with all these lawyers, you don't understand how dates work?
They're all like, well, just because they don't legally have to put it on, they still could if they wanted to.
Oh, Lord almighty.
Feel free to make your pitch, my advice is no, our charter says no.
I could allow my eleven-year-old to watch twelve hours of TV, but that's another thing that doesn't happen either.
I was, having never had one of these citizens position, petitions, I think, at least not seeing like the actual thing that they walk around and get signatures on, I'm surprised that it only requires.
You haven't been to Harvard Square recently.
Clearly not.
Yeah, no, the ten, the ten signature seems pretty low.
Yes, so ten signatures is if there's a scheduled town meeting. If they were, and actually, this, I'll be honest, this attorney said that if he doesn't get this on, they would look to hold a special town meeting, which would require, it's either a hundred or two hundred signatures, and then we would be forced to call a special town meeting for just this article.
Let me tell you.
Does the lawyer work for the landscaping company?
Yeah, he represents, he represents either the buyer or the seller, the interested buyer of the property, I don't know which.
Got it, because they got, they got their twenty signatures from like
neighbors.
Eight houses or something. Like, like, it's like they came to my place and I had my daughters sign it, you know? Anyway, Katie has her hand up.
I just had a quick question. I was on the charter, and I, there, there's a reason for the long date, it was exactly this, so that we have adequate review. But my question is, that we're having a special town meeting for selectmen, and if they wanted to go on that meeting, the ninety days might exclude them.
No, Katie, we'd have to have a special election for selectmen, not a special town meeting.
Oh, okay, so you wouldn't have a town meeting in, okay, because it's supposed to be a fall one too, so I didn't know.
Yeah, now, but right now, we're not having a special town meeting in the fall. We were originally, because we thought we were going to have to vote on the high school, but that's not happening now to the spring, so that would have financial implications for one thing, that's only impacting one family, seems
But there may, I mean, there may be a fall town meeting, with the exception of, two years ago, I think they regularly had fall town meetings for special purposes, so for both citizens petitions, quite frankly, the fall could be the next logical place. But no, the selectman requires just a special election, not a special town meeting.
All right, did, um, you guys have a chance to review the minutes that I sent out?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Great. Somebody make a motion.
Can we do them both at once again?
Nope, because there were different people at different meetings, and you can't vote on minutes that, for a meeting you were not in attendance for.
That's right.
And I can pull them up if you need to know who was on what meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of February the fifteenth as written.
Second.
I don't remember who was at that meeting, who was at that meeting, vote.
All of us.
Everyone, fantastic. Brian?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And me, I'm a yes.
Not pending substantive change.
Thankfully, my minutes do not have to go to town council, or else, I would be in trouble, because I'm a little behind. All right, um, next minutes, please.
I recommend, I recommend, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from Tuesday, March fifteenth. That's me, Erica, and Kevin.
Brian?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. I will have the minutes for our previous meeting and this meeting, at our next meeting, which I will email you all about, because I have no idea when that's going to be, I have to look at the calendar. I don't, unless we need to pay a bill or something, Denise, I don't know that we need to have a meeting before the town meeting.
No, but, so two things, can I ask, maybe specifically for Kevin, what other information you would like from the highway department on the pressure washer?
You mentioned a gentleman named Steve, I don't know who Steve is.
He's the highway superintendent.
Okay, um, maybe a phone call with him, just to get clarity on the reason for the pricing, the rationale behind, that would be, would be helpful.
Okay, does anyone else need that information, or in order to take your vote on town, at town meeting, or?
Nope, if Kevin gets information that he thinks is sufficient, I, again, know nothing about pressure washers, so
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to delegate that.
I'll coordinate that with you, Kevin, and then, I guess, Erica, if you want the committee to approve the report before it goes in the warrant, that's up to you guys.
Oh, yeah, when, when do you guys have to go to print?
I have to send it on the twenty-seventh.
On the twenty-seventh of April?
Yes.
Oh.
So they can, they can either delegate it to you as the chair, and you and I can work on it, or you have to have a meeting.
Want to delegate to me the report that goes in the front of the warrant, which is going to look basically exactly the same as the one that's in there right now, I'm just going to update the numbers. Or we can have another meeting, it's up to you guys.
Do you need a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we, as a committee, delegate the writing of the Finance Committee annual report to our chair.
Brian?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Sorry, Erica.
Okay. I have all the charts and everything on my laptop, so it's fine, it's not a big deal.
If you want, so, a second pair of eyes to review the.
Okay, great.
Yeah, just let me know.
Thank you. All right, and.
Then you probably don't need a meeting before town meeting, other than that morning.
Yeah, I'll put an agenda together for that, so that we can actually be all in the same place.
Unless someone in billing checks the invoices from two thousand and seventeen.
The independent has been paid, that should be all brought up today.
Thank, I got a very nice thank you email from them, I was like, oh, God, I'm so sorry. Is anybody not attending town meeting, so I can let Linda know?
What's the date on that again?
Saturday, May fourteenth at nine a.m.
I am not attending stove town meeting, I'll be out of town.
Oh, yeah, I knew that.
Uh, my wife is graduating from grad school, I will be not there.
That's exciting.
That is exciting.
Yeah, she's getting her MBA.
Nice, good for her, that's awesome. Evgenia, are you going to be there?
Yeah.
And Kevin? Fabulous. I will let Linda know. All right, somebody make a motion, so we can get out of here, in what will be the shortest hearing we've ever had.
We close the meeting.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Evgenia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes, thank you all for your help, thank you Denise.
You're welcome, if you guys have any questions between now and town meeting, feel free to reach out.
Will do.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.